Hey y'all and welcome back to my channel. In this video, I'm gonna be doing a study with me and do a couple of assignments with me. As I get prepared for my week. I'm just, you know, showing you guys my blue light glasses cuz we gonna be in front of the screen for a very long time. Yes, don't play with it. So it's important that I have these blue light glasses on so it won't strain my eyes. So it is currently four o'clock, four thirty-three in the morning. I could not sleep, so guess what we finna do? It's four o'clock, we finna do some assignments. Yeah, duh. So I have to do like about, um, I think it's about five assignments I have to do. Um, so we gonna get into it, we getting these assignments done. And we're also gonna be doing a little bit of studying as well, but I wanna knock this out first, so take you guys along with that. Okay, so I had to, um, take me a little break. Um, I have, let's see, one, two, one, one, two, three. One, two, three. I have three more assignments that I have to do before I am done with everything for med search, so. Um, I got me some American daily, so we bout to knock out the rest of these, uh, ATIs. And, yeah, and then we'll be done with all of my assignments for med search. That way I can focus more on, um, the exam. Um, so I'm gonna, you know, speed through me taking these, um, ATIs and knocking those out. And then when I get to work, I'll, um, show you guys me studying, what I'm studying, and break it down a little bit more on how I'm studying. But to be able to help me successfully study is good and helpful for me to not have to be able to worry about any extra assignments that I have to do or, you know, so my focus is solely on exam prep. Making sure I have all the notes that I need. Um, from the ATIs that I do take, um, I can drop down notes if I feel like, if I feel like it'll help me on the exam. Um, but nothing so far that I've taken far as the ATIs. Um, been like, oh, I need to write this down cuz I can always go back. I can go and look at the, the, um, the ATI, um, dynamic quizin bank and choose whichever, um, subject or whichever system I wanna pick and then I can just test questions from there. Um, but yeah, so for the most part, um, that's how I go about it. And when I knock out the rest of these ATIs, then I'll show you how many ATIs I had to do for med search, which wasn't that many, but I'll go over which ATIs I had to complete, how many. Um, and yeah, so just, you know, you're gonna watch me just speed through these ATIs. I'll see you guys when I'm about to get ready to, to study for the exam. The exam is literally in like a day. So I'll, um, show you guys me studying for my notes and how I break everything down and how I translate that over into Excel style questions. So yeah. And yeah, these blue light glasses, y'all, I love them. Uh, because, you know, you, you can strain your eyes, keep looking at a screen. So like when I get to work and I'm looking at my iPad, I'm gonna have these on. So you gonna get used to me seeing me wearing my blue light glasses. Um, so yeah, y'all see Miami girl in the background, I love it, I love that show, love it. Um, but yeah, let's get into this, knocking out these as- assignments. And, you know, I might chit chat or say something, but yeah, let me get back to it. Also too, um, when it comes to, um, getting assignments done ahead of time, I always recommend it because it gives you the opportunity to give yourself cushion and room for growth. Like, um, let's say for instance, because you're gonna have your classes and you're also gonna have your clinicals that correspond with these classes. So you need to make sure that you're setting yourself up for success. Now, if, if you wanna do stuff week by week and you feel like that'll help you, then, you know, do what's best for you. But as somebody that's, you know, successfully just been doing this, I just, if you have the opportunity to get your work done ahead of time, do it. Because, so when unexpected things happen in your life, like you might get sick, child might get sick, or anything can happen, you can be like, well, I have my assignments done, I don't have to worry about that. Or it's not gonna be as stressful because I've already completed this. Y'all just don't understand how good it feels to be able to only have to worry about studying for your exams and not having to worry about other assignments that you have to do on top of that. So I'd be so thankful when my, um, instructors allow it to be open to where I can go ahead and just get it done and turn it in because baby, I do it, I get it done. And like, uh, I put my video up here where I did like thirty-nine hours of ATIs. Like, I, I don't be playing because it gives me the, the room to focus more on the exam and not the extra stuff. Because these ATIs can get really long at times. So you wanna make sure that you are setting yourself up for success. So yeah, let's get into me doing these ATIs and then let's get into me studying, okay?
Why you wanna run away? Why you gotta be afraid? I wish I could make you stay, cuz baby, I love you. Why you trying to break us up? When I'm trying to build it up? I wish I could make you stop, cuz baby, I love you. Guess I'm gonna dance alone tonight. I'm gonna miss your body. You know I can never get it right without you, no. I don't wanna step into the light if I don't get you, shawty. You bring out the sweetness of my life, oh yeah. Come on in, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, good, good lovin'. Come on in, show me that, show me that, show me that, you're the one. I move to the left while you move to the right. Why you trying to fight just? Come on in, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, good, good lovin'. Gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that. Gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that. Gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that. Gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, good, good lovin'. First you wanna come around, then you say you're leaving town. Everything is upside down, oh baby, I love you, yeah. Why you gonna leave when I need you the most? Wherever you go, I'll be there, you know. Don't be a stranger, don't be a ghost, cuz baby, I love you, yeah. Guess I'm gonna dance alone tonight. I'm gonna miss your body. You know I can never get it right without you, no. I don't wanna step into the light if I don't get you, shawty. You bring out the sweetness of my life, oh yeah. Come on in, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, good, good lovin'. Come on in, show me that, show me that, show me that, you're the one. I move to the left while you move to the right. Why you trying to fight just? Come on in, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, good, good lovin'. Gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that. Gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that. Gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that. Gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, good, good lovin'. Why you gonna leave when I need you the most? Wherever you go, I'll be there, you know. Don't be a stranger, don't be a ghost, oh. I don't feel right when I dance alone. I don't feel right when you don't come home. I miss your body and I love you so, baby, I do, baby, I do, oh yeah. Come on in, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, good, good lovin'. Come on in, show me that, show me that, show me that, you're the one. I move to the left while you move to the right. Why you trying to fight just? Come on in, gimme that, gimme that, gimme that, good. Just pulled up to the house, don't feel like getting out. I'mma just lay back and crack this window. I've been doing my best. Taking a moment to rest, feeling stressed out. Give it a good, I put that on good when it gets hard. Stay on my job like no days off so you can go. Cuz I've been working all day. Can I catch a break? Give a pretty brown girl her space. You can keep your bitter. I'mma make a better way, hey, hey. Already got the world on me. Give a pretty brown girl her space. You can keep your bitter. I'mma make a better way, hey, hey. Better way, oh yeah. Mom and dad's only daughter, do I make you proud? Writing my life in lyrics to your like the sound. Seeking approval constantly. When it's my truth I own, I speak it, don't make sense now. Give it a good, I put that on good when it gets hard. Stay on my job like no days off so you can go. With that, jump off my back. Cuz I've been working all day. Can I catch a break? Give a pretty brown girl her space. You can keep your bitter. I'mma make a better way. Cuz I've been working all day. Can I catch a break? Give a pretty brown girl her space. You can keep your bitter. I'mma make a better way, hey, hey. Already got the world on me. Give a pretty brown girl her space. You can keep your bitter. I'mma make a better way, hey, hey. Catch a break? Better way? Oh.
Okay, so it's looks like, um, it took me literally an hour, an hour, to do this. So, um, I ended up getting ninety-six on it. Um, I only had to, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I gotta remediate on stuff that's below, uh, eighty-five percent. But made it ninety-six on the practice B. Um, and now I should have three more assignments that I would, I have to do before I commit to study. I have three more assignments I have to do before I go ahead and start studying for the exam. Um, I hope you guys enjoyed this so far. Got three more assignments, y'all, and I'll come back to you guys after I'm done with those, um, three assignments and then tell you about them. Okay, so, yes, get into this camera. Alright, so I'm gonna show you guys, um, I'm gonna show you guys me studying, what I'm studying and how I'm studying. So let us get into it. Alright, so, like I said before, um, we got three different categories on what I'm studying. So it is important for, um, to have some notes that like, isn't important to have notes kinda break it down for me to be able to understand the concept more. So no matter what type of question that I'm getting, um, I'll be able to answer it. So for, like I said, perioperative nursing, you wanna get, when you setting up your notes, you wanna make sure that you have it to where it's breaking it down so you know the definition of it. But if you need to kinda switch it up for you to be able to understand it more, then you can be able to do that. So, um, with me setting it up like this and what, well, with the notes being set up like this, it helps break it down. Okay, so you want to know the definitions of what you're studying. You want to know all of the subcategories that, um, that goes with it. So, um, like for pre-op, preoperative, um, nurse, uh, preoperative, intraoperative and post-op. Definitions are here. Informed consent, that's a part of the pre-op, it's stuff, the pre-op. And then it goes into preoperative assessment. Okay, so now we going into the pre-op assessment, which I told you guys before, it's basically important for you to ask in, in, um, for the assessment. Allergies, baseline, baseline data, like the vital signs, O2, diagnostic test. Um, yeah. For example, you have a question and it's talking about, um, whether basically allergies. So let's say that a patient has gotten, um, let's say the patient is, after they got a CT with contrast, they had like a reaction to it. If you don't ask these types of questions, it is going to, let's say the patient needs a CT with contrast. But you didn't ask the question of, did you have a reaction to the contrast after? Or, you know, was your experience with it fine? Because if it's not and you don't know and in the patient, you get, the patient is going for a CT with contrast and comes back with all these issues that you didn't anticipate because you forgot to ask. Well, it's important to hit these areas. So now you go, now we're down to the surgical, um, team. And like what it shows you with the surgical team consists of, the responsibilities. And, and then potential, um, intraoperative, intraoperative complications. With any, with anything that you're studying and going over, you need to know the complications behind it. Like for, like I said, for example, if you're doing, if you guys are going over the respiratory, um, syst- system, you want to know the main complications when it comes to respiratory. If that's talking about a patient with asthma, whether that's talking with, talking about a patient with COPD, you need to know potential complications that coincide with that disease process. So, like I was explaining, the intraoperative complications, um, these are a couple of examples of the, um, intraoperative, um, complications. Um, this meaning, this is going on during the actual surgery or during that process before the patient is going back up onto the floor for, um, post-op. So I've been through these notes a bunch of times, so I'm not gonna like, be like, go toot the nail. I'm just gonna give you guys a brief summary of the everything. So like I said, post-op starts, um, post-op starts when the patient leaves the OR and up to the follow-up for the surgery. Um, management and care. You want, the biggest thing when it comes to surgeries, any type of surgeries, is you wanna make sure your patient has stable vital signs, no signs of hemorrhages. That is really important because if your patient is going into a surgery, they're are, they're at risk for hemorrhaging. That is a complication with any surgery that you do, uh, that, any surgery that's completed. Hemorrhaging is a, a big, no, no, we don't want that. So you wanna make sure that you understand that, you understand that the adverse effects of surgery and the, the complications that go along with surgery. So when you're getting asked any type of question dealing with surgery, you'll be able to answer it. Like for example, um, that your patient is getting a hyster- hysterectomy and that is the removal of the, is it the removal of the uterus? Uterus, I think, or ovaries, one or two. But hemorrhaging is a big complication for a hysterectomy. So you want to make sure that you relate to your patient that they shouldn't be bleeding like consistently to the point or passing big blood clots and things like that. Because that's not anticipated for a hysterectomy. So if they're bleeding to the point where it becomes uncontrolled, that can lead to hemorrhaging. So you wanna make sure that you're educating the patient on complications. And you wanna make sure that you know what the complications is going on with any surgery or any disease process that you're dealing with. So you can be ready and being able to anticipate what's going on. Perioperative nurses some more. Um, goes into the post-op about deep breathing and coughing. And typically, um, anyone that's going, coming back from surgery gets a incentive spirometer to help, help with that, deep breathing and coughing and everything. So that's why it says incentive spirometer. And some monitor respirations and then it just kinda goes into more detailed complication of sepsis. And typically, it's due from an infection. So these, um, this gives you a more like detail about the signs and symptoms of septic, septic shock, what to look for, how to treat it. Um, the biggest thing, when a patient has septic shock, is gonna be antibiotic therapy. Um, typically, if somebody's having septic shock, their vital signs are gonna be abnormal, especially their temp. Because anytime that you have any type of infection, typically you're gonna spike a fever. So typically, pa- typical patients with, um, septic shock has a fluctuating, um, temp going on. That's why it says fever management because that's gonna be your big indication of, something is not right with my patient, they're having a fever. So that's gonna be your big indication cuz your body is letting you know, I'm not okay. Something is wrong. So I know, don't let like some of these terms, um, like scare you away from trying to learn the actual concept because immunocompromised patients, patients like they're part, they have lupus, sickle cell, um, elderly patients, I'll fall under that type of category. Um, but yeah, just making sure that you understand there are different types of things that goes along with what, with what you're studying helps you build on, um, helps you build on your knowledge. You got hypovolemic shock. So, um, um, with anesthesia, it's important for you to know what type of anesthesia goes with surgery. Um, to, like, is your patient gonna be awake or asleep for this surgery? Wanna know how it's gonna be administered, whether the patient's gonna be, um, awake or asleep. And you wanna make sure that your patient understands the effects of anesthesia afterwards. And bef- uh, after the surgery and just like basically, um, what to expect. But also to the doctor is gonna go over what to expect in a surgery. But you want to make sure, um, that everything from your pre-assessment is coinciding with what the, um, the patient is telling the anesthesiologist or the doctor. Or the, I mean, the surgeon. Medications when it comes to surgery. Um, nine times out of ten, your patient is gonna be NPO. But let's say they got a blood pressure med or insulin or anything like that. You want to let the provider know, this is the medications that my patient need. Especially if they're like a blood pressure medicine or anything like that. You just wanna let the, um, you want to make sure you let the doctor know what's going on and then they'll let you know how to proceed far as if I'm gonna let them get it with like a sip of water or, you know, if they're gonna, they'll let you know what they wanna do. Um, but never just give a patient something, especially if you know they're about to go to surgery. Always verify, um, with the doctor or, you know, your nurse has studied, but, um, just notify like the nurse, hey, this patient wants this because you don't ever, ever, ever want to give a patient something right before they, they're about to go to surgery. Cuz guess what, they're gonna have to wait a whole nother twelve hours before they can, um, operate. So no NPO, nothing by, nothing by mouth is what that means. So that means don't give them nothing. I wouldn't even put anything by them to even tempt them into thinking that they can drink or eat. Especially if they have surgery, so. Um, let's see, I've done these a bunch of times, so I'm pretty much getting the idea of it. So, yeah, I don't wanna kinda bore you guys with trying to teach and explain all of this. I'm just trying to give you guys like a, like an overview of what it's look, what it looks like for me to study. Test is in the morning and, um, my test is in the morning. And fingers crossed, everything goes well. So I don't have to sit up here and worry about, cuz I really study my butt off, me and my classmates. So I'm really hoping that this study got helped, helped us and those ATIs helped us because all of that information is just really tied to surgeries. As long as you know, um, which you, um, types of surgery, as long as you understand the concept, I feel like we'll be okay. So, you know. Yeah, as long as we understand the concept, I feel like we'll be alright. But I will let you guys know how it is, um, how the exams, um, went once I take it. So, um, my teacher did go ahead and put in the grades, so I am happy about that. So I do wanna talk a little bit about what went into like studying. I know you guys seen a glimpse of me like studying for like a day, but like I was studying like non-stop like through the week. like going up to school, studying with my classmates, studying on FaceTime, like going through the notes and stuff. I probably, if I probably had another week to study for it, I would've been like A okay, I would've been fine. I would've did a little bit better than what I did. I'll put my grade up on the screen of what I made. Um, like I said, first test, the first exams are always the hardest for me, so I'm not ashamed about what I made. It kinda is what it is with that, when you have um your exam on the second week of uh class, classes, so yeah, um, I'm happy about that. I passed. Now it's on to the next exam. I had to study for, my next one is mental health. Uh, so I had to study for mental health and I had to study for Med Search because mental health is gonna be mental health and then it's gonna be mental health and then it's gonna be Med Search and then both of them are gonna be on the same day and then finals. That's how it's gonna roll, I think. Yeah, that's how, that's, that's how it's gonna go from here on out. So I'm going to have to like study this, study that, study this, study that. So I'm gonna do that. Um, while I, you know, that's gonna be my routine going through for the rest of the uh quarter. So like, when you're trying to study last minute, you wanna have a game plan, you wanna have a map of like, you wanna have a plan of what you're gonna do, how you're gonna do it far as studying, what stuff are you gonna tackle the most, which stuff are you understanding, what are you not understanding? Um, and then even after you take an exam, jot down notes about what you missed the most. Um, I know for ATI, it kind of has a breakdown of like what you missed the most. Take that. Jot down notes cuz you're gonna see those, you're gonna come across that content again for finals. So just always keep a note on what you're missing. So when it's time for you to prep for finals, you can be like, well, I missed this on exam one. I missed this on exam two. I missed this on exam three. I missed this on exam four. So you can be able to keep up with that, so it could be easier on you towards the end. But, um, yeah, that was pretty much it for this video. Um, I do thank you guys so much for watching my video. I'm so happy for my new subscribers. I'm so happy for my current subscribers. So don't forget to like and subscribe to my channel if you haven't already. And if you guys will comment down below, like how your classes are going, how you like this video? Do you want me to make more study with me videos? Um, just let me know in the comment section below. Um, and yeah, that's pretty much it. I'll see you guys in the next video. Bye.